Good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 14th, 2025 City Council meeting for the city of Lamar. I'm Mayor Kurt Krespin. You know, we had Rob who had his last day last week, last Wednesday, I believe it was, on the night, and we did, the staff had did a wonderful pub lecture for him and, you know, made sure we showed our appreciation for all he's done for the community. Over the last two weeks, of course, the council had appointed myself, Emmanuel Temes, as interim city administrators. So over the last two weeks, we've met with all the department heads every morning, just to get a feel and do some fact finding on what's happening within the city and what areas we really need to look at and focus on. And I guess out of everything that we learned during these last two weeks, I think the number one thing that we've learned is that our city staff does a lot of different work, a lot of different things for our community that we really didn't even notice or realize, but there's so much happening, there's so many different moving parts in our city. And I want to take a moment to thank every single one of them in the city, all the staff, all the department heads, for everything that you do. I don't think you get enough credit for that. I know, as the mayor, I always hear the complaints and the gripes and, you know, the moaning about what's not right, but there's a lot that is going white, right? There's a lot that's going well within our community. We're seeing developments, we're seeing growth, we're seeing activity, we're seeing positivity, and we want to keep that momentum going. And Emmanuel and I, I think it's safe to say that Emmanuel and I are both on the same page with wanting to keep things positive and keep things moving. This is a great opportunity for us as the interim city administrators to look at our processes, look at the things that we have in our community, and try to make some changes as well before our new city administrator comes in. So over the next few months, we'll be working on that with the department heads who have accepted us with open arms. So we really appreciate that. We really appreciate the openness to the, and understanding from our staff. So with that said, we have Travis Horn here tonight to do our invitation. Travis, would you lead us in the invitation?
Let's pray. Dear Lord, I come before you this evening, just thankful for your blessings on my life and on the residents that live here in Lamar and in the surrounding areas, God. And I just lift up the meeting this evening, be with the city council and the mayor and those who are presenting different ideas this evening, God. And I pray that our elected officials, you would bless them, and pray that they would put the folks that live here in Lamar first and put their best interests best and do their best just to serve in the community, Lord. I'm just so thankful for the opportunity I have to live in Lamar, just a blessed community, God. I'm just so thankful for the opportunities that we have, and how you've blessed this town, and pray you would continue to do so and just be with the decisions and the things that are discussed this evening. Ask all these sayings in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Councilwoman Lamotta, would you please lead us to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We ensure the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the time is now 7:03 PM. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Che Lamotta.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kurt Krespin.
Here.
David Zavala.
Here.
Emmanuel Temes.
Here.
Brett Bates.
Here.
Kristen Schwartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay, we've all had a chance to review the agenda. Were there any corrections or changes that needed to be made?
I didn't come across any.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We've all had an opportunity to review the consent agenda as well. Were there any changes or items that needed to be separated out?
No.
The same. I didn't find anything.
Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor, signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the council? Okay, looks like we do have somebody. If you could just state your name and address for the record, for our record.
Okay, Lori Hammer, 410 Conifer Circle, Lamar. Colleen Tinas, 10250 County Road, SS, Lamar.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are here to talk about a concert we have coming up on May 3rd. It is our fifth concert, fifth Christian concert that we have here in Lamar. It is, all of our concerts have been free, and so we kind of wanted to come here and tell you all about it and give y'all some flyers if you would like. It's 10th Avenue North and Natalie Lane.
And I would just like to say, we try to keep these concerts free, or they all have been free, and most of the time, probably three-fourths of our costs that we pay for these concerts come from donations at the door. So, I mean, the people that come really give and give more, they catch us later on and give us more money. So, we've really been able to, to keep them free, and then we get that money and have to plan the next one right away. So, anyway, we were just hoping you guys could help us pass the word and come to the concert.
Yeah, yeah. We've, we've estimated around, what, 500 to 700 people that have been coming to the concerts, so. And that's just, I mean, just, we usually talk to Rick Akers or Anthony or somebody, and they kind of know how many's there, or how many chairs are there, and we estimate how many's come. So, we've had great attendance, though. We're excited.
Always heard what great things about it, so that's wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys want?
Thank you. If you don't mind, ladies, can you mention one more time in the microphone for those who are watching online or listening, that way they can understand and even hear where and when?
That's a good idea. Okay, yeah, it's May the 3rd at the Lamar, Lamar Community Building at 7 o'clock. Doors will open at 6, and it's 10th Avenue North and Natalie Lane.
Thank you.
And we also do go by Do Business by Greater Than Events, so on Facebook you can search Greater Than Events and get the next concert, too. So, thank you.
Okay, that sounds great. We'll get the, help get the flyer out and the information out. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak to a council on an item? Seeing none, I'll just remind everybody, as always, this is a perfect opportunity for you to come in and talk to the council on any item that you would like to discuss, or give us your suggestions on or recommendations. So with that said, we will move on to the next item, which is our city treasurer's report.
Thank you, mayor and council. For my grant update tonight, we did, I did include our updated list of grants that we've applied for or been awarded in the project list for that. Tess did a good job updating that. Just a few highlights, we did get denied the Water Smart Grant that we had applied for, for the practice field at Escondido. We will keep an eye on that one and maybe look at the next round and see if maybe we can't revamp our application and make it fit a little bit better. It had to focus on water conservation, and ours was a little light and the round was very competitive. So, we did get a denial on that one. TAP grant for the sidewalks, I'm just working with CDOT right now. We're working on getting a notice to proceed so we can go out for bid for a contractor for that. Wastewater Treatment Plant, we have gotten the go-ahead from EPA on the CDS funding, so work has begun on the engineering and design phase of the wastewater treatment plant, so that's moving forward. Tess has a couple other grants that she's going to talk about tonight when she's up, so I'll leave those for her. We just completed the onsite audit. We had eight days of the auditor being here, so that was, that finished up on Wednesday. I'll continue to work with him and staff will until probably towards the end of June to complete our audit, and he'll come back and do a presentation for us. Tyler, we are, they have developed a new schedule, I had a meeting with them, Tom and I did, on Friday. They were revamping the, I guess, the calendar, and because of when we did the full conversion, it, when they needed to adjust the calendar and the dates. So we're now going to start with the utility billing module, so we don't hold things up on the GLs and everything. So, we're continuing to work on it and getting them what they need on that. So that was all I really had on my list for this evening, unless you have questions for me.
I don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that said, we'll move on to our city clerk's report. Linda?
Okay, so our February sales and use tax collected in March was $389,449, excuse me, $449.62, which was up 5.62% or $20,712.39 for the month. And then our year-to-date was $1,392,210.37, which is up 5.34% or $70,585 year-to-date. That's all I have. Any questions?
All right. Do we have any questions for the city clerk? I don't.
Thank you, Linda.
Anybody?
No.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the city administrators' report. I'll start off with a couple of items. There's the Small Business Development Centers, ribbon cutting at Lamar Community College on Tuesday, April 15th, at 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There is the SDS Movie Night, Thursday, April 17th, at 6:00 PM. The movie's going to be Hop. There's the Harlem Wizards game at LCC on Thursday, April 24th, at 7:00 PM. The K Lamar Team Club Night at the Lamar will be happening on Friday, April 25th, from 7:00 PM until 11:00 PM. And then this weekend, the Lamar Lions Club will be having a fundraiser for their flagpole event. It'll be downtown at the Welcome Center, where they'll be doing a Radio-Thon, as well as another event where they're doing hot dogs, or I think it's a hamburger fry, one of the two. So they will be there this weekend on Saturday, between 9:00 and 1:00. As far as miscellaneous items, we have a few different items to go over, but before we talk about that, we do have a meeting in May 26th for Memorial Day, and we wanted to talk to the council to see if you wanted to put that on Tuesday, like we did last year, or if you would rather try to cancel that. We can make that decision at the next meeting if you so choose, but it is something we need to think about and talk about. Do we have a preference from the council?
I'd be fine going to Tuesday. I would as well.
We're gonna need it Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I'll go with Tuesday.
Conference.
Okay, so we would move the May 26 council meeting to Tuesday, May 27th, for, because of Memorial Day. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we'll make that happen and get those changes codified. So as far as our departments, I know Rob always liked to do a couple of quick updates on the departments. I'll go ahead and let Emmanuel start with one, if you'd like to.
Sure. From the water department, two of the things that they wanted us to just hear, one was that they're continuing replacement of lead service lines, and so part of requirements for the state were to do some checks to see what lines, mills still contain lead, and when they find them, they replace them. And so that's continuing project that's going on. They're doing well, they're on schedule. And then the second part was that, starting in May, we go back to our water restrictions, and so water restrictions and our watering allowed from 6:00 PM till 11:00 AM the next day. Other than that, that's, that's really what we want.
Water side there, yeah.
And then from the IT department, they were sharing that they're installing new cameras. Station 2 is starting to begin this week. They're upgrading their networks and replacing their copper with gig fiber. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. And they completed their project at the Community Resource Center, getting internet and wifi there, moving one of the departments to that location.
Okay. And as far as that, those improvements at the community or the senior center, they, actually, the community development staff will be moving into those new offices at the senior center on May the 1st. They also talked about how Brenda May, Brent Bates, and Debbie Davis had attended the Main Street National Conference last week and came back with some great ideas to energize Lamar's Main Street District. This was a Main Street program or Main Street event. I'm sure Brent will talk a little bit more about that as well. April is Community Cleanup Month. Lamar residents and sanitation customers can still take advantage of three more dates to bring their household trash to the transport station and landfill. They are April 19th, April 26th, and April 27th. There's no door-to-door pickup services again this year, so, but there are community groups that can still volunteer to clean up for a parking wreck in the streets. You can contact Ethan at 719-336-2774 to register as a volunteer. As far as our building department, there's a lot of construction going on in the industrial park south of town. Permit's been pulled for three more metal buildings to go in, so it's great to see some development south of Lamar. Planning and zoning has set meeting dates for the second Wednesday of every month, and the appeals have, for the last Wednesday of every month, adjustment and appeals board for the last Wednesday of every month, and they're currently working on bylaws for both groups. So they're staying pretty busy in the community development department. As for our police department, there is a new canine dog called Taco, named Taco, and its handler, Sergeant Peck, who finished up their training in Texas and are now back in Lamar this coming weekend. This police canine was fully funded through generous donations through our community members. Taco's a one-year-old German Shepherd, trained to find illegal narcotics, handler protection, suspect apprehension, building and searching, and tracking. So, very well-trained dog. We're looking forward to meeting Taco in the near future. The department is also partnering with the FBI in starting a local investigations program for internet crimes against children, in order to catch those criminals who prey on young children over the internet. Detective Sanger will be the local internet crimes against children detective. The program is now active. Detective Sanger will be hosting informational sessions for the community in the near future, so you may want to keep in touch with that. One thing I did want to add on, I know Emmanuel had given the report about the water department. Part of the discussions we've had as the interim is what's happening in each department, and what we found out this past few weeks is that in our water department, there's a fluoride system. It's a fluoride injection system that we use inside the city limits. And back in the 50s, they began injecting fluoride into the water to help with cavities and, and things of that nature. So, our system is starting to deteriorate, and it's going to be a very, very large investment to replace that. So the discussion was had, was it required? Was it not required? What are the specifications nowadays for this new injection system? So there was a call that Pat had made to inquire about it to the CDPAG, Colorado Health Department, and they, the minute we, they heard that we were inquiring about it, they got kind of riled up because they didn't want us to stop using fluoride. However, many, many communities have stopped using fluoride in their water systems, and I know there's been some debate on the federal level right now about fluoride in the water systems as well. So I'm mentioning this because we are going to have to have that discussion over the next few months, as far as what are we going to do? If we end up making this substantial investment on a new injection system for fluoride, and then the federal government bans it or cancels it to where we don't, not supposed to put fluoride in there, we would have lost a large chunk. So because of that, we're doing some investigations on it. If you hear about it, I just want the community to be aware that we are investigating our options, we're looking at what needs to be done, the pros and cons of having fluoride in our water system, and it's, nothing has been decided yet, nothing has changed, and nothing will change until we bring it back to the council for a final decision. But in the meantime, if you do hear that there's rumors about it, it's all about our investigating our options. So I wanted to clarify that. Did I cover everything there, Emmanuel?
You did, you know, and I think just maybe a couple of things. There's, there's a small percentage that's added into the water, and I think the requirement or what the standard's been, it's like about a 7%.
Point 07.
Point 07%, you know, and not beyond that. Our natural water has a point 05 already. So there's natural fluoride already in the water at point 05, without adding anything to it.
And that's coming out of our wells that we have tested, that it's point 05. So that's, those are the parts that we're looking at is how much of it, how much are we actually putting in the system and what we're going to do from there. So we'll be bringing that to the, back to the council in the future for more discussions. Okay, any questions for the interim city administrators from the council? I don't have any. Okay. All right, with that said, we'll move on to reports and correspondence from the council. I'll start off on the right or my left. The golf board will meet tomorrow. They did have three tournaments. They recently had their sod busters, their icebreaker in the Redneck Olympics. As of now, I know of two board members have resigned from the board. Rick Akers and JJ Reiber have resigned. They did appoint two to fill the spots, and I'm only aware of one individual right now who took that spot. His name is Branson Jennings, who will be filling that position, and they are waiting for an okay from the other individual to find out if he's going to take that spot or not. But as of right now, they will have another scramble coming Memorial Weekend, and that's really all that I have until the board meeting tomorrow. Okay. And that does bring up one option or item that we needed to discuss as well. I believe one of the members was a council member, one of the individuals that they approached was a council member. I was approached by this council member to see if he could serve on that board as an individual, not as a representative of the city council, because he wouldn't be representing himself as a city council member, he would just be representing himself as a member of the public. I wanted to get some direction from council, as well as the, you know, city council, to see what the regulations would be on that.
In his capacity as an individual, I don't see it being an issue. Obviously, if there's any kind of litigation or disputes or contracts that come before him in either capacity, you would have to abstain if it involved the two parties, but regarding just being a member of that board, I don't see a conflict there.
Okay. And I know we will have the liaison still with Joe Gonzalez, so he would be the liaison for the council and would be representing the council, so that wouldn't change at all. This would just be his own, standing as his own individual. So, does anybody else have any questions or concerns on it, or do you want to have some discussion? I think, I think it works.
Well, when it was brought to my attention, you know, I was happy to hear, you know, they'd come up with Brett, and I personally didn't see any conflicts. I'm glad he chose to reach out to you guys to find out, to go the right route and, and see that, you know, and I believe he'll do a good job as a citizen, you know, representing citizens there, and I think he'll do a great job.
And I think when we had this in the past with Ann Marie at one point on PEP, you know, we just needed to make sure that you keep the lines clear between representing the city and representing yourself as an individual, and I know we didn't have any problems on that. I know it gets to be blurred at times, but if you could work on that, that would be great.
Absolutely, and I let the board at the golf course know that it would have to come before council first, and I was very explicit in letting them know about the process for abstaining and what that means, so.
Okay. Well, there's no objections, we'll just give that direction. Sounds good. Okay. Next one, Che Lam.
The airport board will be meeting later this week.
Okay, Jerry?
Um, hang on. I do have, on the Christian Walk, I think that's what it's called, they had a really good turnout. They had about 100 people show up to do the walk. I followed because I was like the little bus that would pick up the ones that couldn't make it and take them back to their vehicles or whatever. They did have the 100 show up, they had three get baptized, and they said they were very thankful for the city of Lamar helping them out, and they would like to continue doing it next year. And also, we need to give a shout out to Amanda Duffy and the Lamar Fire Department auxiliary ladies. They had a wonderful bake sale this weekend, Friday, and they ended up making $1,350 on their fundraiser.
Wow.
So whenever anybody sees these little ads in Facebook, they are wonderful bakers, they make awesome cakes, cookies, whatever. They do ice cream fundraisers, they do all kinds of fundraisers to help out the fire department. So if you guys ever see that, reach out and help them out if you can. Also, today I was looking at Facebook, and we had a family coming through Lamar, headed to Denver, and they stopped at Willow Creek Park, and they ended up getting a flat tire. And one of our good city employees, Jason.
Loveland.
Loveland helped them out. So we would like to give a big shout out to Jason and whatever staff members were with him that helped them, and we're glad that they acknowledged it on Facebook. Thank you.
Okay. David?
No, not anything at the moment. I know we got a historic, historical meeting tomorrow morning, and as for planning and zoning, I think you said it was, they changed it over for every second week of the month?
Yeah, I believe so. I, yeah.
Water board did meet. They're going to start recharging the ponds next week. Now, through the winter months, the most recharge that gets done is through rain or snowfall. And so when we don't have rain and snowfall, the wells will start to deplete. But the good news is that the majority of our wells are still a foot over where they were from last year at this time. So we're doing good, and they're going to start recharging the ponds next week. Some of the discouraging news, our snowpack, some discussion was, was brought up, and, you know, each area has their own snowpack region, but they were saying that the snowpack for our region is somewhere in 60% of normal for this time of year. So that's something that, you know, we could use the rain. I don't know if those rain dancers have been on break or holiday or what, but we can get them activated again. We could use some rain anyhow. And we mentioned earlier about the water restrictions, so that's what I have. Brett?
Right, kind of a lengthy update. I was not at the last meeting because it was on my birthday, so I was out of town. So like Mayor Krespin stated, myself, Brenda May, and Deb Davis were in Philadelphia last week, Sunday through Wednesday, for the Main Street Now Conference, is the annual conference that Main Street America puts on. Took a lot of great things away from it, some really big one that I'm going to be reaching out to council and coordinating some meetings with Dole Council, and the representative from Maryland about a project that Maryland has started that I think would really benefit not only Lamar but Colorado. You might have noticed the new banners up on Main Street. We were able to get those Welcome to Lamar banners up within the last couple of months, and shout out to Leandra Chavez for the wonderful artwork on that. You've probably also noticed some work being done, Caddywampus from North Loofen Jug on that building, some preparation for a big beautiful mural that's coming around, and then just really revitalized and re-energized on the board right now. We've got some new board members at Main Street Lamar, and then PEP meets next Monday.
Okay. Well, that sounds great. I had a meeting with Brower's Medical Center CEO, Karen Bryant. Of course, they have their election coming up in May, so they're excited about that. They have one individual that's definitely not renewing, and so far, they do have two candidates. They do have three up for election this year, the one that's not renewing, and then the other two that are looking to renew as well, which is Norm Arinst and Joe Spitz. But Scott Reed will be resigning from his position. So with those other two, I believe it's Jay Brook and Kelly Gaines, yes. Drew a blank there for a moment, but yes, they will be running for these two positions, or for these positions, and hopefully that'll be a successful election for them. They're also looking forward to our annual event that we partner up with them in June, which is our annual community social that we have. So we're looking forward to doing that again this year, that we've done for the past five years, I believe, four years. So it should be another great event. They are getting a new surgeon in pretty soon, so things are moving fairly well at Brower's Medical Center. Aside from that, we do, I haven't been to a SECED meeting or a CCOG meeting, because I've been a little overwhelmed with doing other jobs, but we will be discussing that later tonight as far as. later tonight as far as changing the liaison to SECED and CCOG to Anne-Marie Crempin. So with that said, we will move on to our new business. All right. New business. Item number one is a public hearing for special event permit for the Lamar Chamber of Commerce to host a beer garden during Cinco de Mayo. So if I can get a motion to enter into the public hearings.
So move.
A second. Have a motion in a second to enter into the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, we are now in the public hearing. So we'll start off with the staff presentation. The clerk has submitted some of this information. Would you like to give us a little update on this?
So the special event permit may be issued by our local licensing authority upon local licensing authority upon legal application to certain types of organizations, allowing them to sell alcoholic beverages by the drink to the general public. A special event permit cannot be issued by issued to any organization for more than 15 days in any calendar year at a specific location. This will be Lamar Chamber of Commerce first permit for the 2025 year. Application has been made by Lamar Chamber of Commerce for a special event permit for the following date to host Beer Garden on May 3, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Lamar Chamber of Commerce for the Cinco de Mayo event. The required fee for the permit has been submitted, and we posted to hold a public hearing on our April 14 meeting, and it was posted onsite and in the paper no later than, sorry, April 4.
Okay. And then we also had a application review by the City of Lamar Police Department. Chief, did you find anything? Could you give us an update on your findings for the application for the Lamar Chamber of Commerce liquor permit special event? No problems at all? Okay. All right. So do we have representatives from the Chamber of Commerce here? Give you an opportunity to let us know what you're asking for, what your request is?
Hi, everyone. My name's Colby Brewmaker. I'm the president of the chamber.
Hi, my name's Hillary Peralas. I am the secretary for the chamber and the chair for Cinco de Mayo.
So you got two more?
Martha Alvarez, board director.
Tenisha Fleishman, board director.
Okay.
So we're here to request permission for the city council to approve our special event permit for Cinco de Mayo on May 3 from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. over at 109 East Beach Street at the Enchanted Forest. No changes from last year's map, no changes with the security. All of our directors that will be serving beer at the event are TIP certified. We do have one that is not, but they will, that's a request that they asked to not serve alcohol at the event, so we will make sure that they're in a different area while they're volunteering at the event. But yeah.
Okay. So no changes to the fencing or the security? You'll still have the same.
Same thing. It's kind of, it worked well for us last year. And so, yeah, the same kind of thing. We'll have the the main entrance for all of our crowd, and then we'll also utilize that back entrance for vendors when they're leaving, same as last year.
Okay. And then the fencing, I know last year, well, it's been a couple of years ago, but it seems like you've gotten that a little more improved.
We have, and like in the very beginning, the very front now, Rancher Supply is gracious enough to donate us some panels to use for it, just so we have a more structurally sound entrance for the front and the back entrances.
Okay. Okay. Anything else you'd like to add on your portion of it?
I'll let Hillary speak a little bit about the event.
Okay.
I just wanted to invite everyone to come out on May 3. It is in the chamber parking lot. We do have quite a few new events this year. First one that everyone is excited about is a chihuahua race. So super, super excited. We are still kind of working out some stuff. The next one is going to be a salsa contest, and it's not salsa dancing. It's like actually chips and salsa. So I didn't want to clarify that. A lot of people was salsa dancing. So we do need judges. So if anyone would like to volunteer to be a judge, I'm looking at you. We would love to have judges there. And then we do have quite a few bands, local bands, so we're super excited. We haven't announced our bands or DJ yet, just for the excitement to build up. But we do have quite a bit coming in. Huge thank you to High Plains for helping us out, donating tons of businesses, which we will get them all posted here pretty soon. But you guys could please go out there and just check it out, see what you guys think, and enjoy the time.
Thank you.
And to speak a little bit more, the High Plains Community Health Center, Community State Bank, Golden Plains Insurance. We have a couple more sponsors that will be coming in this week, Southeastern Colorado Arts Council, the lodging panel as well, a bunch of different sponsors that definitely help make this event happen. So a big thank you to those those sponsors for helping us out.
Yeah. All right. Okay, thank you.
Do you have any attendance numbers from last year?
I know at peak times, it could be, it's it's gotten over 1,000 at peak times. Once those live, once those live events kind of die down in the very beginning, then it gets back to steady probably about 500, like constantly. Yeah.
Wonderful. That's good.
It's a very, yeah, it's a, it's a well attended event, and this will be the second annual one, and the first one last year was very well attended. And I think we just try to make sure that there's enough live events that keep people there and make sure the quality of vendors that are coming and visiting Lamar. I know several that come out of town to come to Lamar and join us, and definitely helps to the variety of vendors that everyone gets to come out and see.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we are going to open the floor up for anyone for or against the application. Is, we'll start off with anybody against the application. Is there anybody that would like to speak against this application?
Good evening, Lamar City Council. I'm Galen Burnett. I live at 800 South Sixth Street here in Lamar. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about alcohol-related deaths in the United States have doubled in the last 20 years. Alcohol is killing Americans at a rate that, as I said, has doubled between 1999 and 2020. Young adults are bearing the brunt of this public health crisis. Researchers have found a fourfold spike in alcohol-related fatalities among the 25 to 34-year-olds. This is exposing a trend that experts say is fueled by rising stress, which we read about, mental health challenges that we read about, and pervasive drinking culture that we also should read about. Individuals who consume moderate to large amounts of alcohol tend to have the highest risk of premature mortality and morbidity. The total number of alcohol-related deaths rose during that time from 19,356 to 48,870, representing a more than twofold increase. The mortality rate increased from 10.7%, excuse me, 10.7 per $100,000, 100,000 people. Sorry about that. In 1999, it's raised up to 21.6 per 100,000 people in 2020. Men and women are both men experiencing increases. Men have the highest rates in the increases there, the sharpest overall increase. But the ladies are fair sex. They have been jumping. They jumped from 4.8%, 4.8 for 100,000 in 1999 up to 12 for 100,000 in 2020. Alcohol drinking does cause problems in all kinds of areas. The thing that I want to to mention also in this is that alcohol consumption, as it has increased, as I said, mostly especially among the younger generations, but it's tied in with the poly drug use, using alcohol besides other drugs, such as opiates. We've read a lot lately about, I'm trying to think what that is. It starts with an F. Sorry about that. My mind is playing for that.
Fentanyl.
Yeah, fentanyl. Thank you. Thank you. But we see when it's put in with alcohol, it's even more devastating. The overdose rates have skyrocketed during that time. What can be done about this? If we really care about the seeking the best for our city, for the Lamar community, here is an opportunity for the Lamar City Council, the leaders that we have chosen to help us, to help. Right now, you can choose to protect our citizens by not approving this request. Thank you very much. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? All right. With no other people wanting to speak on this application, we will close the floor. And I'll open it up for any questions or clarifications for the council. If you need to get any clarifications from the applicants. Anybody?
I have a concern. I have a concern. Last year, I volunteered some time for the last event, and while I was volunteering some time, not every individual would take a band for alcohol. And there were a few folks running around in there drinking alcohol without the band. Now, Melanie was really quick to correct the problem, which I appreciate. So I would just ask the president that whoever's at that area that's actually pouring alcohol to make sure that they're wearing the appropriate band to receive alcohol. Because if you're not catching it, then that tends to be a problem.
I could understand where if if somebody was to buy it and give it to their friend who didn't have a band, do you have any plans to correct that? Or do you have any ideas of how you could address that, Colby? Sorry, you go and speak from there. I'm just saying.
We'll, we'll make sure that we go with our security as well as like an additional action. But at any given moment, we probably have six to eight directors on the chamber board that are there. I'll make sure that we visit with them as well, as well as the six security officers that are constantly walking around. We do have those fronts, though, where somebody comes through the fronts, they say, oh, no, I'm not going to drink or whatever, and then perhaps they get given one. So we do need to make sure we look out.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we asked everybody that entered the gates, you know, if they were going to consume alcohol, then we would put a band on their wrist. And there were some that didn't. And but, you know, when it came around to it, there were some that were running around drinking that shouldn't have been. And it's like, well, just go get a band, you know, just follow the rules. That's all we're asking.
Colby, where are they checking IDs at the front entrance?
At the very front before you ever come into here. If they're that main entrance, we're going to change for us.
Okay. I might suggest keeping some bands at the actual beer garden. Yep, table as well. That way, if someone comes up with that one to get a refill, they can check it there as well. And maybe having some of the board members who are walking around, helping around, helping out, keep some on them so they can check IDs. And if they see someone who maybe didn't know that they needed one, they can either handle it or get security to escort them out.
Thank you.
I did have a question. You mentioned that peak times, probably 1,000 people, steadily 500. How many security officer detail are you planning to have there?
I think we're actually maybe planning on adding one more. I believe six.
Okay. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Any other questions or clarifications that you want to get from the applicant?
I don't have any more.
Okay. Then I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second. You have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign. Joe?
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. So open it up for discussion. If there is any more discussion between the council, or we, if not, I will ask for a council action.
Make a motion to approve the applicant's beer garden. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the applicant's request. Any final questions? Sorry?
Hold on a second. Authorization to use our property, city-owned property.
Okay, so we would need to do both. One is to approve the special event permit and allow them to use the city property.
They can make a motion to approve the special use permit and allow them to use the property.
Did you update your second? Okay. So you have the motion in a second. Any final discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is approved proclamation number 2502, a proclamation of the City of Lamar declaring April 30, 2025 as Arbor Day in April 26 through May 2 of 2025 as Arbor Week. I don't have a copy of that with me. So if you'd like to come on up, we do have members of the tree board here.
About to get my group.
Get your group here.
Get my group.
And I will read that as normal and see if we can get an approval.
Do you have the proclamation up there?
Yeah, I have a copy of it, yes.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and read it through, if that's okay.
That's fine.
All right. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. So do we have a motion to approve this proclamation?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve this proclamation. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Now, therefore, I, Kirk Cressman, mayor of the City of Lamar, Colorado, do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 30, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Lamar, Colorado. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I further, I urge all citizens to plant trees and gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this for future generations, dated this 14th day of April 2025. Do you have a copy there?
Yes.
I can go up. Do you have more than one?
Yeah, there are two.
Just do them both. There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Did you want to say any words on that?
Yes, sir. I am Kim Van Hook, a member of the Lamar Tree Board, along with Joyce Reedy, Nancy Idler, Jack Van Hook, and Dewey Norfleet. We are celebrating our 34th year as Tree City USA. We were notified recently that we received this award. We would like to thank Drew Griege for taking such good care of the work hours and equipment hours that we need to submit the Tree City USA application. Additionally, thank you so much to the city employees that help us with digging holes, putting water out, et cetera. Okay, this year we will be celebrating two separate Arbor Days. The first one will be held on Tuesday, April 22 at 10:30 at the North Great Way Park by the new Dog Park area. The LCC basketball boys, we helping with the planting. We are planting six Nyside trees from the Home Store. The trees we are planting are a 10-gallon Linden, 10-gallon flashfire maple, 10-gallon Sumatra maple, 10-gallon Northern Catalpa, 20-gallon box elder, and 12.75-gallon tulip tree. On Wednesday, November 30, at 12:30, we will be planting 100 On Wednesday, November 30th, at 12:30, we will be planting 120 bare root trees at the Pollin Nursery close to the Hope Center. They consist of 20 American elm, 20 American sycamore, 20 black walnut, 20 hackberry, 20 honey locust, and 20 Colorado blue spruce. The fifth graders from Parkview Elementary School will be helping us plant, is what our my eminent leader told me to say, but it's actually the fifth graders will be planting, right? If you want a good time, come on the 22nd, the 30th of April to plant with the fifth graders. Maybe again this year, we can have the worm eating contest. We are also welcoming that day Valerie Nache, the new urban and community forestry program specialist for the Eastern Plains with the Colorado State Forest Service. She will be demonstrating to the kids how to plant bare root trees, and we give them all shovels. The fifth grade poster contest with the themed title of the superpower of trees was held and ended March 13th, 2025. The winning poster was sent to the National, the Colorado Tree Coalition that is sponsoring the vet, the event, but we have yet to hear anything from the winners. April, pardon me, Arbor Week will be April 26th through May 2nd, and Arbor Day will be held on April 30th, 2025. And thank you for your time and your support for the tree board.
And thank you for all you guys. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Yes, the tree board's an important part for our community, and they do a lot. So thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is to review a new copy machine agreement. This is initiated by Thomas Sanchez, the IT Director. Thomas, would you like to speak on this tonight? Figured since you're here.
Just over here. We've discussed the move of the community development people over to the senior center. And they're going to need a new, well, they're going to need a copier scanner fax over there. And this is just to do a new lease for a new machine over there. It is on par with everything that we have here. The cost per print went up just a little bit since our last one, but it's not, it's like a tenth, tenths of a cent. I don't have that number in front of me, but I can get it to you if you would like it. Lance has reviewed and an addendum is attached because it is a five-year lease. And I don't think he had any issue with it, with the addendum attached. And I'm here to ask the council's permission to have authorized the mayor to sign the agreement.
Okay. Any questions for Thomas?
I don't have any.
None. And you did look it over and everything's good, right?
Same, same, similar contract to what we had before, just with that five-year lease aspect, the addendum addresses the taper piece.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the lease agreement and authorize mayor to sign.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the lease and allow the mayor to sign. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, designation of the Cray House to the Lamar Historic Register. This is initiated by Anne Marie Crampton. Anne Marie?
Yes. I'd like to introduce Jennifer Mortimer. She is our Historic Preservation Board Chair. And she's actually been on the board for a long time. I know. So the, we're excited because we're, we have two houses, historic homes in, in front of you today. The first is the Cray House, the St. George Cray House, built 1898. And it's at 303 South First. I like it because it's in a less prominent historic part of Lamar, and it, it shows that we really have some wonderful historic homes. Getting this or allowing historic designation will allow the owner, Ernie Monet, to potentially apply for Historic Preservation Tax Credits. So when he, he does work on his property, which he plans to do, then he'll, he'll be able to use those tax credits to gain back some of the, of the costs that he's incurred. St. George Cray was an independent cattleman. He had huge ranches in the area, and he's got quite a history, which I thank Big Timbers Museum for helping me dig up. And it's, if you ever want to know, quite a character and his family, look up St. George Cray.
Yeah, it was interesting reading some of the history that went along with it. So that was very appreciated.
And his whole family was bilingual Spanish. They, they taught Spanish classes. And he was an Irish immigrant. So think about an Irish immigrant speaking Spanish. That's got to be confusing.
Okay. Do we have any questions for our guests tonight? I don't have any, but I'd like to thank you for the information you did put in there. It was interesting reading about the homes. Any questions on the resolution?
I don't have any.
If not, do we have a motion?
I approve the res, I move to approve the resolution that designates the St. George Cray House as a local historic property.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Item number two, designation of the DC Marker House to the Lamar Historic Register.
Yes, so this house is a little more prominent. I think people know what house it is. It's 405 West Olive, and it's actually Jennifer Mortimer's house. I really want to thank Jennifer for her, her work on the historic board because she is, you've got to help me. She's doing it, an avocational certificate.
In archaeology.
In archaeology. So when, when I need details and when I need some help on, on designations, she, she really pitches in and helps. So the DC Marker House is, it's a striking house, and, and people know that it's former Bowen Photography and Morris Manor Photography House. It's also the childhood home of Kurt.
Kurt Gentry.
Kurt Gentry, who wrote Helter Skelter and another book on. Yeah.
FBI director.
Yes, yes, FBI director. Notorious FBI director, anyway. So great history, beautiful house, beautiful woodwork. One of the things that, that I didn't realize when I first walked into Historic Preservation is really we're trying to preserve the external part of the home. And that gives the homeowner the ability to adopt, adapt the house to what their home needs to be, you know, update kitchens and bathrooms. But in that particular house, there's some beautiful woodwork still there that they've preserved. DC Marker was a builder in the early 1900s, and I'm sure if we had a list of his homes, you would see a lot of characteristics. Jen thinks the Cray House might have, might have been built by DC Marker, because it's very similar. So, Janine?
Okay. All right. Any questions?
I don't have any. I move to approve the resolution that designates the DC Marker House as a local historic property.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you stay up there, Anne Marie? So the next item on the agenda is change City of Lamar's SECED and SECOG, the SECOG Designee. Powers County designates a seat on Southeast Enterprise Development, which is SECED, and the Southeast Council of Governments to the City of Lamar for a representative. I've been the representative for the last five years, and by taking on the new role of the interim, it's made it very difficult for me to make these meetings, and it's always been a challenge for me because generally these meetings last a full day, and it's once a month. And one year I actually tried to meet every single meeting, and I used half of my vacation days for the whole year from the bank, just so I can attend the SECED meetings. And that's not really how I want to spend my vacation time. So I am asking if we can appoint, I had asked, approached Anne Marie to see if she would be interested in taking my position on the SECED and SECOG boards on behalf of the city. And I did so because as a Community Development Director, she's very in tune with what's happening on the economic side as well as on the regional housing side. So it seemed like a natural fit for her to be involved in what's happening with SECED especially. So today I was asking to see if I can get an authorization for me to sign the letter to the Powers County Commissioners requesting that change. So if it's okay with the council, I will submit this letter and request that change.
So moved.
Second.
And Anne Marie, she was willing to do this.
Oh, absolutely.
She wasn't voluntold, so.
No, no, this, it really, I've been to two meetings so far, and they really do align with, with my job. We're trying to increase affordable housing, which is what SECED is doing. So I need to be very in, aware of those conversations at a regional level. So I appreciate it.
Well, you were probably the middle man for a while since you got the position.
Yeah.
Pass a lot of information on, so that'll be a lot more efficient.
Yeah. So we have a motion in a second. Jerry has the second. So all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, agreement for law enforcement and security services for Riverside Communications. I will be stepping away from this one and letting our mayor pro temp handle this. I don't know if I need to step away or just let you handle this. So I'll, I'll step away on the seat. Okay.
The Lamar Police Department has received a request for security services to be provided for Riverside Communications LLC, K Lamar, AM and FM, with Kirk Cresspin and Lamar are holding a teen club night at the Lamar, having several dates selected, starting on April 25th, May 23rd, and June 20th, 2025. Each event beginning at 7:00 PM through 11:00 PM. And they've requested the services of two police officers for security, and will be doing the PBTs. It has been assigned, compensate each officer at the rate of $45 per hour. Chief, is that correct? Are there any questions in the council concerning?
Lance, did you look every, over everything, and it looks good?
Looks essentially the same as the one we approved last time, so I have no issues with it.
Okay, council, what is your pleasure?
I move to motion to approve law enforcement and security services request for the event.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of with Mayor Cresspin abstaining?
Okay. Thank you, Manuel. Next item on the agenda is review and approve contract agreement with Golf and Sports Solutions for Escondido Field. This is initiated by Anthony Luchor, and Manuel Temez and I have been working with Anthony on this as well, so we are familiar with it. Anthony?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. You should receive, should have received the update for the LCC improvements to the On the spreadsheet and the increase amount on the estimate, the bottom line was a little under $20,000. But on the spreadsheet, it does provide a breakdown of all the services, equipment that the city's providing and everything that LCC will be providing with the new estimate.
So we had talked a while back, and we had a agreement with LCC to split the cost of this in half. That was when it was a little bit lower in price. The price has increased due to the amount of dirt work that needed to be done. I know I've, we were going to approach this earlier, but I wanted to go back, and I've kind of put Anthony through the ringer, verifying and double-checking and triple-checking everything to make sure that we are getting the best deal for our money. We went as far as working up a contract for this agreement. And in this contract, we were asking the provider for a year, a warranty. Is that correct?
Correct.
How long was that warranty?
It would be a three-year warranty under the condition of the parks and maintenance staff following the prescription that he writes to care for the field properly.
But during this three-year time period, he's going to come back and give recommendations, at least during the first year, recommendations on what needs to be done. That was a given, considering our last, you know, our original sod that we had put in was not quite the right type of sod, and wasn't installed quite the way we would need it for our environment. This individual is willing to give us this guarantee for the three years to make sure that we have a good quality filled with this investment. So this will be more of our professional field that's meant for games and the college use to make sure it meets all of their requirements, and that's why they're looking at paying for half of it.
I think when we were in a phone conference with them, they did, and I, I asked, and they did say they were going to give close oversight after the initial installation to make sure that everything was done properly, everything was going to be, so they'll be watching it real close in the first few months to make sure that it takes well and that it's all done properly and properly handled.
I did go through and worked with Anthony. We looked at any possible way that we could do this with less money and less of an expense. We looked at trying to recycle the old fields. We looked at recycling some of the other, you know, soil. But there was, you know, the, in the end, this is what the final product was and the final proposal. So it will be a significant increase, but, or a significant investment for the city. But if we're looking at a long-term build for LCC, that's why they're willing to match us on it and make that agreement. My recommendation would be to approve this pending the matching agreement with Lamar Community College. Is that fair to say? We, Lamar had already committed to it, right?
Yes.
College. Do we have that in writing, or do we have that, anything with that?
No, we.
Are we going to do that?
We do not have it in writing, and we will be meeting with LCC to make sure not only the increase with the field, but some of the other stuff that we had spoke about.
Okay. So we can approve it, but that's the understanding is that LCC would be covering half of that.
As far as budget goes, are, do we know where we're pulling this from?
I have 100,000 budgets and conservation for us.
Yeah, the rest we'll have to find. So that's another.
44,928.
25.
Why call 45,000? Was that 100,000 earmarked for anything else?
No, it was specific for us.
Well, we split that, that would be 25 for the difference.
Okay.
The one, the 148, or the 48,000 divided by two, make that the 24, 25,000.
Okay. Have you looked over this contract?
I wrote it.
He wrote it, yes. So they did not have a formal contract through the contractor itself. So we did have our attorney write the contract with the, our needs, and we met with them to determine what their needs were. And this is where the contract was developed from.
Perfect.
It includes the three-year warranty. That was part of the conversation that was had, was over that. And I know there's been some communication back and forth, trying to get confirmation from there in that everything looks good. We haven't got that yet. So if approved, I would, I would just ask that it be approved with any changes that I would approve to it. In the event there's changes that maybe they have the wording or something to that extent, but.
But you would do the work on it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so the full motion would be then that you're recommending is move to approve the contract pending a signed agreement with LCC as well as all further changes go through Lance?
Yes.
Okay. And how much have we round estimate invested in Escondido since this project started?
A million, nearly a million.
Prior to this, it's over, it's over 1.1 million dollars.
1.1 million?
660,000 of it is the sod.
Okay. So, I mean, it doesn't sound like it'd be very wise of us to let that 1.1 million go away over 25,000.
660,000 is going away anyway. So this is in addition.
I just mean it's letting the whole project fail over trying to find 25,000 if it's a 1.1 million dollar contract, you know, product at this point. Sounds like more, sounds more irresponsible than just trying to figure out where we're going to pull it from and potentially making some cuts to things that you're wanting to do in your, you know, the plans you've been creating. And I'll just say, keep up with that thing.
Well, I think the reason why I, you know, really like the idea of having the warranty is that it states in there that we have specific prescriptions that we need to do, a specific process.
Yeah.
And if we don't meet those requirements, then we lose that warranty. And as I told Anthony, that's a specific list of jobs that his employees need to do. And if they're not getting done, then it's costing our city a lot of money. Is that fair to say, Anthony?
That's very fair to say. And I think, you know, the reason why the estimate went from what it was to what it is now is because originally they were going to take one inch of the subgrade soil off. But after extensive looking at, looking extensively at the soil grade testing, it was basically road base that was underneath the sod. So they wanted to completely remove all of that out, which they're going from 450 tons of the 50/50 command soil to 1,450. And so during that cost, the first estimate, it was $38 a ton. They lowered it to $28 a ton. And there are some other things that they're going to do in-house and not charge us for block levating the field and some laser grading that is not going to be charged, but they're still going to do the work.
Awesome. And I think one of the things we've had a conversation about is they've already started putting a lot of effort into the practice field and retaining the sod that we have in the practice field. Of course, we tried to apply for another grant to do a similar type of field with the practice, but I'm not sure that that's necessary if we can revive the current practice field. I know it's not as nice or as level as the new one will be. But for a practice field, I think it should be, you know, capable for handling what they need for now. So our, our plan, my, is my understanding, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but our plan was to continue to try to, you know, restore the practice field and get that to a usable state for practices. Is that correct?
Correct.
And for community use.
Yes. And Ted Vasquez and his crew will be the ones that remove the sod and doing the tearing out of the field. So I want to thank Ted and Public Works for their willingness to help with this project.
And our understanding is they would be done by, what did he say, June?
No, it would be done, once they come on site, it will take them anywhere from five to seven days. So by Lamar days, the field should be.
Less than four days. Okay.
So the agreement with LCC, will that be coming before council as well?
We'll need to bring that back. Yeah.
Yes.
I would, on the, once they approve their side, we would just, we can move forward with this one. It's just we need to get their approval on their side that they're going to commit to whatever they're going to commit to.
Okay. Well, I know you've been working really hard. I know you've been getting the guys going, getting the whole staff going and trying to get a lot of those things rectified and I appreciate that. I move to approve the agreement pending the LCC agreement and also with Lance being the one to look over all amendments and addendums and et ceteras and whatnots of the agreements.
And allow the mayor to sign.
And allow the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is Lamar Swimming Pool repairs. Anthony?
Yes, our swimming pool is in need of some repairs. I contacted the company that installed the PVC membrane liner in 2017. The pool still has one year of a warranty remaining. But in order for them to come out and do the service on it, we need to sign an agreement contingent on if there is no warranty that we would have to pay for the services. And that's where the estimate of the $10,481.42 comes from. We have two issues here with our swimming pool. One is the jets. Some of our jets have blown out and removed some of the membrane away from the concrete. That's the area that may not be covered under warranty. But the areas where the membrane has pulled away from the concrete where there's no jets, that may be covered under warranty.
So we don't know for sure if that's going to be covered or not. We won't know until they arrive on site and inspect it. So it kind of leaves us in a predicament because if we approve it, you know, we're allowing them to do the work, but at the same time, they can't do the work until they reviewed it and see if it isn't covered under the warranty. So I don't know how to get around that. Any suggestions?
Well, I mean, it's, so obviously they, in the past, had made a warranty to the city regarding membrane and, you know, it can depend upon what they find and what the cause was. I would say depending upon what they find, there's a likelihood that a portion's going to be covered, but maybe not all of it. I know Anthony's had communication with them about the situation and I think it's just really going to come down to their review of the membrane to determine whether or how much would be covered.
And their timeline is going to be before the lifeguards need to practice and get tested?
Yes. Their timeline would be, I spoke with the vice president today. They have been experiencing some weather delays, so they're looking at coming out. It'd be the end of the month, that last week of April. After speaking to Kim today, she did say that we probably need to look at getting the pool pressure tested for the water to make sure there's no underlying issues with the pressure with blowing the jets out. She's going to get in contact with me tomorrow. She said she has several contractors that are in Colorado that should be able to help us out. The company's out based out of Indianapolis, Indiana.
So that's going to be an additional cost on top of this?
There may be an additional cost.
But we don't know how much that will be or?
We don't.
No estimates?
And I will keep you informed. But one of the good things is from our chlorine changeover that recently happened Thursday and Friday, we were able to save almost $7,000 from the original estimate. And I had talked to Kristen about possibly using some of those funds to go towards these repairs.
Okay. So we could definitely use those additional funds for the testing at least, right? Okay.
And on the document itself, it has, you know, that's the authorized.
And it's going to.
Change to the mayor. Yeah, we would need to change that.
Thought about that can just be widened out.
Yeah, I didn't see that, but we can.
We can get it changed.
We need to change that. So if it was approved, we would need to have approval for the mayor to sign as well? Counsel?
How's that going to read? Approve the services and allow the mayor to sign?
Yes.
Anthony, what is that 1107 Parkview Avenue address?
That's the address of the swimming pool.
That is the address to the swimming pool. We just need to change, for mailing purposes, we need to change that to 102.
Would you like to, me to change that on the agreement as well?
Yeah, the.
I think they had it down as the warranty address.
Okay, and that's fine. I mean, that's fine on the word. Just to make sure that the city gets the mail. I mean, there's no mail.
Okay. So just approved with the mayor to sign, allow the mayor to sign would be what we need. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions? Do we need to add that to the motion as far as the modification of the names or address?
I don't know if Linda can correct it. I don't see so. It's just.
Okay, and have you reviewed them?
Yeah, I, I didn't. So one piece I would point out is that in the event of litigation, that the venue for purposes of litigation would be in Indiana. So hopefully we don't have to go to Indiana to have any issues there. But otherwise, you know, it's a warranty piece, so you're kind of, to some extent, at the mercy for them to be able to review that on their terms. But otherwise, I had no, no issues with it.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion in a second with no other questions. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda, facilities use agreement for the fitness classes. This is initiated by Anthony as well. Anthony?
Yes, so we currently have one facility use agreement with Kelsey Palmer who provides personal training in our facility. We have had other individuals approach us. One is a person who would like to do prenatal yoga classes. She received her certification recently and she's obtained insurance to provide those courses. And in the discussion with Emmanuel and Kirk and also Lance, we were looking at trying to change the agreement to make it easier for individuals to teach those classes in our facilities so that we can get more classes going on and reach out to the public.
So what I was proposing was rather than trying to do an agreement like a part-time employee to do these classes, that we create a facility use agreement similar to, it's basically a facility service agreement, similar to what we do with our concession stand. It's an independent business or a sole proprietor that comes in and rents the facility based upon a commission or a portion of their profits. We do that with the concession stand currently and it makes it simple. We can have that agreement, require their insurance and that they have their own, their own products insured or their own services insured. And it takes us out of being the service provider and we just, or the facility provider and leaves it open for these business individuals to have their own business, to create their own businesses and just utilize our facilities. So that was kind of the intent. Does that cover what you're looking at in your, the contract that you created?
Yeah, I mean, so obvious, this is a, the much, very similar contract that was previously entered. You know, I, I think the city could approach these however they want. I don't see any issue, you know, with the percentage piece per se. I think there's a lot of ways that you could go and, you know, evaluate how you want to recoup some of the opportunities that you're offering and the expense that you have involved here. So I don't have an issue with the 10%. I think that's really a council decision on how they want to move forward with that.
Is alcoholics under similar?
Is what?
Alcoholics, the.
They, they do a lease.
They do a lease.
Similar to what we do for like the concession stand, the ball fields. Something like that. We do percentage of.
Of sales?
Sales. One, I think the, uh, Mr. Clutch is the same way.
So.
So, I mean, it's a similar idea to what we, the alcoholics. Of the building. So it's.
Monthly rental rate that they pay for alcoholics.
The problem with these fitness classes is that they could have one month where they have five attendees, one month they have 15. Or one month, they may only have two. So it varies. And to cover a flat rate lease agreement every month is asking them to guarantee that they're going to have that many, that much of a revenue stream each month. So the idea of using that percentage would allow them to pay as they go based upon their volume, whether it's five, 10, 15, 100 students. We would just base it upon their usage and what they're doing. But it's up to the council. This was just a proposal to see how, if we can make this work with the facility use agreement. The other, only other thing that we didn't cover on that is that adding Lamar, the city of Lamar as an additional insured on their insurance policy so that we were covered if anything was to happen. But that's the only other thing that I had saw.
And that provision is in the contract itself.
Yeah. Oh, it is already. Okay.
Yeah.
And I did get ahold of her and ask her if she could add Lamar as an insured participant on the policy. And I know she has sent an email and she's waiting to hear back to see if it was going to change the premium at all.
Okay. Would their usage be tracked through sign-in?
Yes.
I think it would be a great idea and give the opportunity for more individuals who are willing to try and do something similar there to try it as well.
Yes. And I did just want to mention that we have a gentleman who moved here from Littleton, Colorado, who's wanting to start some dance classes. So some 1920s, 1930s dance classes. So he's interested in this policy as well.
So the same agreement would work for that as well, I would see. Yeah. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I think it's, it's depending upon the type of usage, what type of insurance the city wants to require from individuals in these situations because I think your risk is different depending on the type of service that's going to be offered. I know this one has kind of a general, uh, general insurance requirement. But I don't know if, depending upon that service, if how council wants to, you know, evaluate that type of insurance.
So wouldn't there, if, if I was a weightlifter and wanted to give classes on weightlifting and I applied for a business insurance for a weightlifting, wouldn't they determine that based on the insurance or? I guess I'm just asking the question compared to a dance studio.
Right. I would assume so, but I don't know what conversations people have with their, you know, insurance providers, but I would assume that they would be explaining the services and, you know, the liability risks and what would best cover them. But
Okay.
Hard to say what those conversations are.
Yeah.
Well, and I just know from the fitness side that whenever they do contact the insurance company, that they are supposed to have the proper certifications to teach what they're wanting to teach.
So we could have those reviewed to make sure.
Yeah, and Kristen brought up one piece that needs, needed to be changed, which I failed to catch was on number three as starting date of, of the term really, or of the payments being on January of 2016. That was from the old contract, so we just would want that to reflect April of 2025.
Okay. Could, could we hold a copy of their license or certificates on site?
Yes.
I have a question. Section eight, under indemnification, hold harmless and insurance requirement, it says third paragraph down, user further agrees to provide to city at the time of, of the execution of this agreement, a comprehensive liability insurance policy, including public liability and property damage written by a company approved by the city Parks and Recreation Director. So the insurance company has to be approved by the Parks and Rec Director?
Well, I think the type of insurance is, is how I'm viewing that.
Okay.
Would be approved essentially by the city.
Okay.
And what I did with this new person was I did forward her insurance policy to Lance and to Kirk and Manuel.
I was going to say that, yeah.
I think Linda will need a copy of that to keep it.
It needs to go with, yeah, I need a copy of it to go with the facility use agreement.
Absolutely.
So that we can make sure that it gets audited and we're in compliance.
Okay.
And then when, so they make payment monthly? Is this, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
So I'd like to, to be able to track that.
Okay.
To go back to the agreement. So I'm I'm not sure how it's been logged in the past.
I think that it needs to be set up in AR. As an AR.
I, how do we set it up as an AR when we don't know?
We don't know how much.
Exactly.
That's true.
And I can just say, based off of this contract that we're talking about, it does differ depending on the times of the year. So it's not a, you're getting so many clients for 12 straight months. You may get some, you know, around the holidays and vice versa.
So you know how um currently the the Sports Booster Club, that that receipt gets brought, money receipt gets brought over to me um singly?
Yes.
So that way I can track it. Can we do the same thing with any facility use agreements?
Absolutely.
Yeah, they need some sort of justification of how many they had in classes and how much revenue they took. We also do that for the.
Sports Booster. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or?
I don't have any more.
Any other concerns from our attorney?
On this one.
Okay. Okay, counsel, what would you like to do?
I move to approve the agreement and allow staff and mayor to sign.
Second. No, a motion in a second to approve the agreement, last mayor to sign. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Sure.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item is the Pocket Park Facility Rental Agreement. Uh, this is also initiated by Anthony Latour, and this is dealing with just a pocket park. Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, we had some issues. Now that um it's ramping up to the spring and summer season, um, we did have some issues last year with, especially with the extended park hours and the alcoholic beverage permits that um were being asked as special circumstances. Um, we've had some issues with loud noise ordinance, you know, problems or bottles or trash or no cleanup in the evenings, and it ended up costing the city quite a bit last year. So to try to find a solution for that, um, this is what Anthony is bringing back. Is that correct?
Correct. And some of the changes um that we're asking, I know Kendra had visited with the treasurer's office and Linda and um, we're unable to, correct me if I'm wrong, issue a refund, so requiring a deposit.
We're not unable to do it. It just becomes a matter of timing and we can't hold checks, we can't hold cash, we have to deposit it into a holding account and then issue them a check back. And if you have very many of those, it becomes a timing issue. They want their money back. You know, we, so I said, in what we've done sort of to keep from having to do those deposits in those situations is adjust the fees so that they cover some of that expense. You're not going to have every person that you have to go in and clean up after, right? So we try to adjust the fees rather than have all of that, you know, money flowing in and out. We do do it in some situations, scum traps, things like that, but it's it's usually for a longer period and they understand they're not going to get their checks. You know, the money refunded back to them for a couple of weeks, but we have another council meeting, you know, and can approve those checks back to them.
And over the summer, this could be weekly.
And this could, we could have two or three a week, you know, so with during this discussion, we felt like it would make business flow better and easier if we could adjust the fees. You know, to cover the cost and then evaluate, you know, maybe next year and say, hey, is is this covering what we think our expenses are? So it wasn't that we can't do it. It was just a matter of if the usage is high, it's, you know, it has to go through a process. It it has to be deposited and then a check has to go back and you know, there has to be a check sheet and all of that, which there should be anyway for cleanup. Should be part of the agreement with what is expected of dumped, you know, trash, you know, those specifics. But that that was the discussion that was added.
I do have one other question based upon that too, and I guess this is more for our legal counsel. Is it legal for the city to to create a do not rent list for somebody that is, you know, has caused a lot of damage or that has left a lot of waste after renting the pocket park? For a do not rent the next time or, I mean, that that's that's the biggest concern is we had some dances there where there were broken bottles strung throughout the parking lot and uh none of it was cleaned up. There was decorations left that needed to be cleaned up and it was pretty extensive. And, you know, in those situations, um, the rental agreement asked for them to clean up after themselves and when they're not doing that, taking care of the property, it makes it more difficult to re-rent to them, I guess, is what, if it was written into the rental agreement um that they that there could be revoked from them, you know, continuing uh future usage. I mean, if we, if they sign that saying, you know, we understand that by our usage, if we break or just disregard that, they could be prevented from future use.
Yeah, we didn't include that as a piece of the guidelines and rules that we came up with, um, but I think we could add something. I I mean, essentially what the city is doing is giving a license to this property to be able to use it. A license can be revoked at any time, so.
Well, I I have a question if you don't mind.
Okay.
Um, if they're serving the alcohol, what's to prevent them from uh serving it to the minors? And uh could we add a provision in there to where they would have to hire security services while they're serving alcohol, if they're serving alcohol?
Yeah, we couldn't monitor that, or we couldn't monitor that.
No, but if, you know, like uh what we're doing here with several other events where uh uh Chamber of Commerce has is hiring security, where they could hire uh one or two off-duty police officers at that going rate of $45 an hour. For their events.
Selling alcohol.
They, they're not selling.
No, they're not selling, but they're still distributing alcohol there, yeah.
That's a, that's a whole different issue.
So I mean, they they would have to come before us for a special events permit.
An individual can't can't come before us for a special events permit. It has to be an organization.
Of a special use permit? So we have in here a requirement that they.
Special use permit.
Right.
Yeah, special use permit.
Well, the other other thing that I suggested that I don't see in here is that if something gets damaged or broken, tables, shades, lights.
Cheaters, there's lots there.
That that needed to be in there, that they will be billed accordingly.
And.
For those damages. And I don't see that in there.
So I think it's on the application itself is where we where it ended up getting included.
Okay.
Or, and and really it was just a set of general rules or that could be used on what, no matter if it's the pocket park or some other park, but if there's damage occurred, that they are liable for any damages that occur to the premises while they're after use, after their use of it.
So should it stay on here that you will comply with the rules or on, you know, the application or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and that that was, I mean, one piece that I I wanted it to to have included was just that it would, they comply with the rules of the facility or of the pocket park. Um, but in order to get this bar, right, I think they'd have to complete the general application for it, so they're, I would like for this to say the same thing, but um even if it's just that term of complying with the rules that have been set forth in the application.
That's what I was thinking, just I had, they've read and understood.
I I wonder too, then, you know, what would we need? And this, you know, of course, it's going to take somebody's time for them to, you know, go through a checklist and saying, this wasn't damaged, this wasn't damaged, this wasn't damaged, yes, I agree. Because otherwise we say, it was damaged when we got there, you know, so for them to sign off on a checklist saying, these items were in good working condition, not broken, and when we got here, I checked it off that everything was good. So then now, when they're done, we can say, yeah, it was good, you signed off. But now that you're, you know, turning it back over, this is broken, this is broken.
Well, it would have to be a Parks and Rec employee who does a pre-check before the use hours or then use since. Again, after, whether, then that would, I mean, with the, I mean, I've seen homeless people living down there, so if an event ends at 11:00 PM and the check's not done until 6:00 AM, and I'm the one renting it and a bench gets broken in half, I could just say, hey, this homeless person was there jumping on that bench after we left and where's the proof?
Yeah, I think the difficult part is you can go down a rabbit hole and get really specific and really detailed, and I don't think it's going to be beneficial for anybody. Uh, we did have an individual wanted to ask a question.
I thought there was a signpost, you don't have alcohol beverages in the pocket park.
Yes, there is, unless they have a special use permit. So there is an exception for special use permits for them to bring their own or to have some. So even in North Gateway Park, if they had a beer on them, they wouldn't have, they're supposed to have a special use permit.
That's on all city park properties.
On all city property.
I know the corporate cup that LPI or Main Street Lamar does, each team gets a special use permit to be able to have their own beer, liquor at the event, and that's per team.
And the softball tournaments.
Yeah, same way for the softball tournaments, lots of different events.
Okay.
You might want to check with the Pu- uh Prowess County Veterans because they used to rent it a lot and it was getting destroyed. And I think their deposit's $1,000.
Well, again, it's makes it difficult to do the deposits because then you have multiple, that's what she was just saying, you have three in a week. And that person isn't going to get their deposit for a month possibly.
So rather than um the checklist aspect, I think we can just put it back on the individual that if they uh prior to beginning their event, if they notice something that's damaged, that they notify the uh city right away. So I would say as far as, you know, a speculation regarding damage, you had an opportunity to notify the city beforehand if you noticed that.
And it'd be Parks and, they would just notify Parks and Rec Department.
Email, call, whatever, but yeah.
That would streamline it for sure. I mean, you know, at least something that's in there to where it gives them an opportunity to make a claim that, hey, before I got there, I called and told them this was the condition.
And probably, I mean, I feel like email would be best because then there's at least a timestamp that shows like if their event was run, they're renting it at 5:00 PM. If they got there at 3:00 to set up and sent an email over to whoever it is at 3:32 PM that this light was completely busted out or whatever it is. But you're saying add to this piece.
Well, not so much here. I think this one, all you add to this is compliance with the rules that are set forth in the application.
Okay.
And then in the actual rules, that's going to apply to every facility. It's gonna, you you add that piece to it.
Okay.
Okay. So we would deem a motion, basically, as you stated, that would apply back to the application, correct?
Yes, and I want to make sure you're aware of the cost increase. Um, we would increase the daily usage from $58 to $100. Um, the applicants, uh, the alcohol beverage special use permit, that cost would be $100. And then the extended park hours special use permit would be raised to $50.
What were they before?
Uh, we didn't charge for the extended hours and we did not charge for the alcoholic beverages. And upon the alcoholic beverages, we would require no glass at all, no glass beverages.
The fee schedule.
But this is for the only the pocket park, right, on this one that we're talking about?
But it's it's specific in the fee schedule, each facility.
For each facility.
So maybe we could bring a resolution back to the next meeting and just.
Well, I know you need to get an answer for this current rental.
No, I think, and we could just bring the resolution back to next meeting to change the fees. If you could approve this now, but I think we could fix the fee schedule this year, since we're implementing it now and not at the end of the year.
Okay.
And she brings up a good question. Would would we want to do that on the current reservations that are in-house? Or would we want to put a date to begin this process?
From this point forward, because it was only approved from this point forward.
Okay.
Start it. I, we just need to fix the fee schedule. That's the next.
Okay, so I guess the question at hand is uh whether or not we want to approve this agreement with the new pricing schedules. And if you want to add the addendum like Lance was recommending, we would just need to do an approval with the addendum as Lance had for the enforcement, as Lance recommended.
Yeah, I mean, all I'm saying for this contract is that we add, say, number four on here, that it says compliance with the rules and guidelines that's set forth in the application. I think that's sufficient. We already have rules and guidelines that we've been working on. I think we can add a few more little uh based on the conversation tonight, some some more pieces to that. Um, and then really, I think those rules and guidelines are pretty much set at that point. And then every application will have those attached to it. They sign it, they acknowledge that they're bringing to them. But for this purpose, I I think it's really just adding number four and council being um good with this application.
Okay. Can you repeat what that number four is so I can make my motion?
Uh, that that they agreed to be in compliance with the rules and guidelines that's set forth in the application.
Okay. I move to approve the agreement with the addition of number four under glass containers are not permitted to be exactly what Lance just said.
And allow the mayor to sign.
And allow the mayor to sign.
Okay.
And the new fee increase.
And the new.
Well, the fee increase is on there, right, with the application?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you for putting that.
So we have a motion in a second, as stated. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, next item on the agenda is concessions contract for the Lamar Sports Booster Club.
Yes, so we we would like to move the contract back to May 1 until April 30th of every year.
Okay. So this would be from May 1 until April 30th of next year?
Yes.
All right.
Everything else still the same?
Yes.
Cool.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any final questions? Sign none. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, thank you. Oh, a motion to ratify council approval to apply for balance of funds from the CCOG 2024 Technical Assistant Grant and authorize the mayor to sign if awarded.
I'll shame.
Looks like this is the one for Tess or this is you?
This is just ratifying the vote you already took, so I think we can probably.
Okay.
Anybody if you want.
And we've already approved this through the phone poll. Okay. Counsel?
Make a motion to ratify the phone poll.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Then we have another motion to ratify council approval to accept the Colorado Pet Overpopulation Fund Grant and authorize the mayor to sign. So we did a phone poll to accept this grant, um and everybody had approved that. So we just need to ratify it.
I move to approve, to ratify the phone poll.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
You know, she said.
Okay, now it's Tess's turn. Authorize the staff to accept and sign the firefighter safety and disease prevention grant. This is initiated by Kristen Tess and Chief Perkert.
So I think two council meetings ago, we apply, asked permission to apply for this grant and we asked for $19,578.62 to cover the cost of a new extractor for the fire department and they accepted our application and we are asking for signatures to move forward and purchase the new machine.
So we were awarded the grant, right?
Yes, the full amount.
The full amount, so okay.
Awesome.
Counsel?
I move to accept and allow the mayor to sign.
I'll say, yeah.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item is permission to apply for the Gary Sinise Foundation Grant. This is also with Kristen Tess and Chief Perkert.
Um, this grant is for specifically first responder departments. Um, I have an updated quote I'm going to give all of you in total. Instead of the $36,500, we're looking at $57,133.98 for several different pieces of new equipment for the fire department. This foundation has no match requirement.
So it's all covered?
Tess?
Very nice. Very nice.
And there is a already a quote included from A one for saws in the back, and it is six of each of those types in the packet, not on the quote that I just gave you, sorry.
So the total amount is fifty-seven thousand one thirty-three ninety-eight?
Yes.
And that's all approved by the grant?
Yes, there would be no match.
Okay. Right, should be an easy one. What's the counsel's pleasure?
I move to authorize staff to apply for the Gary Sinise Foundation Grant.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Good luck on it. Okay, um, next item on the agenda is review and approve the contract with Strategic Government Resources, S G R um, as the approved recruitment firm firm for the deputy of public works search. Um, at the last meeting, we had discussed the using S G R for the city of Lamar, city administrator search. And I brought back the contract after it was reviewed by our city and our our city attorney. They had these two backwards, actually. Number eighteen is for the city administrator search, and number seventeen is for the deputy of public works. We actually had an individual who was, that we've been working on for about eight to twelve months, trying to recruit him into the city of Lamar for the new deputy of public works. He was from Alaska, and we thought everything was going pretty well, but for the second time, he backed out at the last minute and chose not to accept it. We have been searching for this position for roughly two years.
Uh, one since Martin left, so it's been.
Almost three, almost three years we've been searching, and we've been using the same search methods for all this whole time, and that was the closest we've ever gotten to getting somebody here that was qualified and had met the qualifications we needed. This position would be a deputy for Pat Mason, of course, with all of our senior staff. Uh, many of them are, have reached their retirement time or getting close to that, I know Pat's been here long enough that he could retire, he's not old enough to retire yet, but, um, he's actually reached that time. So looking at our succession planning, we really need to get a deputy of public works in there to start learning, and that's why it's so critical. Pat and I had talked about different options on how do we get a new deputy of public works? Since they've been using this same method for the last three years, we thought maybe it would be better to contact S G R and see if they would be interested in giving us a discount. And they did give us seven hundred and fifty dollar discount on their rate, but it wasn't a huge discount, but it was a discount if we were to do both. And speaking with Kristen, we do have funding, is that correct?
We do.
For the deputy of public work search, and we can get that out of each, we would split it out of the different departments? Okay, so we would pay for this out of the different departments for this, and it is a possibility if we we choose to go this route. So my question is, is this a route we would like to research or move forward with? I think because of licensing and experience, uh, you can't just, you know, put out a general request, which in the almost three years, you know, while looking, having one person get close and then it not manifest, so I I think, you know, putting out another source to try to fill that was, is is wise. It's a very specialized job with all of the requirements, so it's, you really have to find the right candidates, and you can't find them by doing what we've been doing with regular newspaper searches. So, and we don't have anybody in-house that is either willing or qualified to do the job yet, so that's why we haven't taken that step in-house. So, okay. So I'll open it for discussion. What do you guys think?
I think they'd be heading in the right direction. It has been open for quite some time since Martin has left, and if there were somebody here that was in-house qualified, I think they'd already be in that position. And since we haven't been able to produce anybody with our means now, why not try with S G R? See what they can do for us, and, you know, how many applicants they can bring to us for this position.
Well, and just like with the, um, administrative purchase, uh, administrator search, I would encourage anyone local who thinks they are qualified, once, if we move in this direction, to apply through S G R.
Agreed. Agreed. So with that said, um, Lance has reviewed the contract, and we tried to get a, the questions addressed that he asked about. Was that sufficient?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So we would just need to make a decision on which route to go.
We just need to make a motion to allow S G R to move forward?
Or to approve the agreement?
Or can I make a motion to approve the agreement?
Allow the mayor to sign.
And allow the mayor to sign.
Okay, we have a motion.
A second.
And a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, the next agenda item is the exact same thing, but this is for the city administrator search, um, using the same company of S G R for the recruitment firm.
I move that we use S G R for city administrators.
I'll send here the sign.
And allow the mayor to sign, sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to present the agreement and allow the mayor to sign. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, number nineteen is any miscellaneous items, do we have any miscellaneous items we need to review? Seeing none, we'll move on to our executive session. The executive session will be for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and or instructing negotiators under Colorado revised statutes twenty-four six, four oh two subsection four subsection E regarding the city administrator's search. There will be no decisions coming out of the executive session, so directly after the executive session, we will adjourn the meeting. That way we can close out the meeting online and in the office as we move into the executive session. Do we have a motion to move into the executive session?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you for joining us, our next meeting will be Monday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five at seven P M.